Champions. Whereas it being the first time in Bristol or Warren history that this has been accomplished, and the members of the Warrentown Council realize that participation in organized athletics helps to build character and teaches a wholesome sense of fair play and good sportsmanship among our youth. Whereas, to really excel in any one sport, a young person must demonstrate, in addition to a great deal of natural ability, an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work. Whereas, special commendation is due to all members of the team, to coaches and staff, and to team sponsors who have given generously of financial and moral support. And whereas, this has been an exciting, hard-fought, and successful 2021 season. And we are proud of the record you have earned and the fine publicity you have brought to our community by your inspired team play. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Warrentown Council, join the family and friends of the 2021 state wrestling champions in exceeding the congratulations, oh, in extending the congratulations of all citizens of the town of Warren on their extraordinary accomplishment and outstanding wrestling season. Prove this the 10th day of August 2021. And Kerry Cronin, President; John Hanley, Vice President; Joseph DiPasquale; Steve Colenda; and Brant Hecker. Congratulations. As Kerry said, I'm a member of the community. I was a wrestler. But some people may not know that I was also probably a coach to what, 30, 40, 50% of these kids? So it's another time in my life where I can feel old, especially small, weak, and vulnerable, considering some of these kids, I told them when they get to be their size, they get to wrestle me, so we'll see. But I would also like to welcome our State Representative Jason Knight, our Senator Walter Felag, and June Speakman. Because you could be the lady from over the bridge. Sorry. But they also have recognitions for you from the state legislature and the Senate. And we're going to form a little line here. And if you would come on up, when I call your name, please come up. And what's kind of nice is you all wait up here and make the big group picture. And everybody seems to like that. So first, we have Elijah Brand. Good stretches. Come on, you got up here. Congratulations. There you go. And then stay up here, we're gonna torture you.
Right now.
He's a wrestler. Next, we have Joshua Vertulo. Congratulations, Josh. Carson Correa. Nick Gomes.
Not here.
Liam Malone. Ethan Brand. Congrats. Everybody who knows about organized sports, these kids wouldn't have done it without their parents. So really, they all, a lot of them started in USA Wrestling when they were five, six, seven years old. And let me tell you, there's a transformation that you're gonna see coming on, especially with one of these guys, Towers, Mason Furtado. Five years old anymore. And I'm talking to him back then. Brock Pacico. Cole Ryback. Jamesy Thibodeau. Riley Furtado. Matthew Campo. Kristen McCain. Ethan Delante. Kari Grifka. Coria. Greg Vida. Ryan Conway. Patrick Pitts, the little kid that was the size, up to my knee, up to my knee when I first met him. Lally Genus. Dennis? Dennis? Head Coach Eric Francis. Assistant Coach Michael Ferrara. Ferrara, Ferrara. Sorry, I didn't open it. And Ryan Fozzie, Assistant Coach, Fozzie. And I'd like to take this opportunity for the coaches, any wrestlers who dare say anything, here's your time. But I definitely would like to hear from Mr. Francis. And Mike.
Congrats. I have to say, this is a special pleasure for me, having had my mother grow up in Warren, my dad in Bristol. I wrestled at Bristol High School. My Uncle John Rogers was a coach here for years at Warren. I was able to coach at Bristol, coach at Warren for a year before we came together as Mount Hope, and then start as a Mount Hope coach as an assistant years ago. And if you asked me that many years ago, if I would ever be the head coach at Mount Hope High School and lead them to their first state championship, I'd say no. I didn't think that it would be me, but it's a great group of kids. They allowed to tap it for me, because without them, the team's nothing. You know, I can head them in the right direction, but you know, you have all the brains in the world, if you don't have the throwing and the skills, it's not gonna happen, and vice versa. So it was a perfect storm, and I'm glad to be part of it. Definitely a great, great feeling being involved with it. Boys, I don't know if you'll, if you're feeling it yet, but someday, when you're almost 50-year-old man like me, you've been, you know, half a point away from having a state championship and never have won it, you guys can always say to your kids someday, and I'm gonna tell you guys that, that you'll walk in there and say, "I was part of that group." Always have your entire life, and still be proud of it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Coach Mike, you wanna say a few words? Everybody squeeze in, get in close. Come on.
How's it going, everyone?
Come on, you wrestlers, touch each other.
How's it going, everyone? I'm Coach Fozzie. I came on the team two years ago to help support my brother, who's a first-year wrestler. I'm from New Jersey myself, from a real small town, Fallsburg, but we love wrestling. And I felt it in the room when I first came to Mount Hope, that we wanted to be a good team then. This year, COVID-19, we even know we're gonna have a season, but we have kids train during the offseason, practice real hard, keep their weights in control. What other sport can you think of as a prerequisite that you need to weigh in prior to competing? That's difficult. Some of you guys in this room can't skip a meal, included. So I was wrestling halfway, but I'm so proud of these kids and the young men they're becoming. They all practiced incredibly hard, and realistically, this wasn't a win that was easy for us. We lost a couple times this season, and we showed at the state tournament why we're the best. Thank you, guys.
Remember, guys, persistence over resistance, and life is third period. Never give up.
Well, I don't like to skip a meal either. And I'm like, Eric, I'm older than 50, so I just want to say a few things. I coached in Massachusetts for many years. Eric also coached in Massachusetts. Someone said high school for many years. I coached on high school level and a college level, and this is by far the best team I have coached, the most talented, best team I have coached. Because of our program in this region of Rhode Island, the Warren Youth Wrestling and the Community Middle School Program, these kids came to us with, some of them with 10 years of wrestling experience before they even stepped on a mat at Mount Hope High School. Now, I coached at Murphy High School, and we were training the kids ourselves, when they were in the ninth grade, and to their senior year. We have a feeder program like we have here, and I used to watch the basketball teams in Fall River, who had kids trying out for the teams. Every kid on the basketball team, it was the same season, knew how to play basketball, everyone knew how to redline, put it through legs, everyone knew how to do it. When I came here, every kid that came in as a freshman, for the most part, knew how to wrestle. I said, wow, this is a good thing. And Coach Trans decided, we're getting together for four years, this was our four-year cycle, and we went from being okay four years ago, being the best team in the state. And there's a big future in this program, and we're not gonna stop, we're gonna stay at the top, and we're gonna bring a lot of championships back to both of our communities. Thank you, guys.
I always had a subway. I would have never been that way. But it does, and you're skin and bones, trying to drop a pound. Sometimes you would spend a six-ounce belt. Or a power, maybe a six-ounces, to make the six-ounces you need. And then you're expected to go out there and be a wrestler.
Right.
Thank you, wrestlers, we're very proud of you. Thank you, families. All right, on to something really exciting. We have before us now a presentation from Rhode Island Housing Rent Relief Program. With us this evening is, I'm sorry, is Amy Raynon. Please come up.
Very much.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a lot less exciting.
Tough act to follow.
Thanks for having me here, and for inviting us, and it is an important resource, and appreciate any help that Warren and the other municipalities in the state can provide in helping us get the word out to your residents. You have, I think, a couple of pieces of information. So one is a presentation that we did with the Governor's Office, two municipal leaders, and another is, I think you have a one-pager on each program. That's exactly, exactly. So I'm not gonna go through the whole PowerPoint or anything, but I wanna get through the highlights with you and talk about how we're working with other organizations and municipalities to get the word out about the program. So the program, the big program that's in operation right now is called Rent Relief Rhode Island. So we have, it's actually $352 million right now, to provide to renters in the state who are behind on their rent or utilities. So that's a lot of resource, and we are working very hard to get the word out to folks who may not be aware that this is something that they might be eligible for. So the program is basically, there's three eligibility criteria. There's an income qualification, so for the rental assistance program, it's 80% of area median income, which in this area is about $69,200 for a family of four. So anybody who reaches, who is under that income qualification, and also has had a COVID impact, so if you've had a financial hardship as a result of COVID, lost income, or your expenses have gone up, and also that you're at risk of housing instability, that can be anything from having, being behind on your rent, being behind on your utilities, that counts as a housing instability. Those are the eligibility criteria. So if you feel that you need those criteria, you can apply for assistance on the materials I gave you. It's rentreliefri.com is the website. You can go there for more information about the program, information about how to apply. We have a whole kit of partner engagement opportunities, including for municipalities. So there's sample newsletter materials, there are sample Facebook posts, social media posts, that kind of information. Yeah, these one-pagers, this one pager here is available in English and Spanish. We're actually talking now with the schools. We're having open houses now, or doing back-to-school backpack kind of things. We're working for food factories in the state to get the information out. We've reached out to the faith community in terms of putting the word out through their, through their communities. So really wanted to make sure that you were aware of the program, in addition to a couple of more details in terms of what can be funded. So we can provide up to 18 months of assistance. That can be backward rent, so if folks are behind, however, 50 months of their backward rent. It can also be up to three months forward-facing rent at a time, as well as utility arrearses, so any utility arrearses that you've had since the pandemic. And more recently, up to $50, a $50 internet stipend, stipend as well. So lots of different resources that folks can potentially be eligible for, and really looking for, and for up to 18 months, so up to 18 months. So we have a call center. So in terms of how folks can apply, they can apply on the website, they can call the call center, and the number for that is in the materials as well as the presentation that I think they received. It's 855-608-8756. There's 130 people working in the call center, and they speak 100, they have access to 126 different languages. We also have partnering with some organizations on the ground, including East Bay CAP, that can help people one-on-one, if they can't access the online application and want to talk to somebody face-to-face, they can do that through East Bay CAP and other partners that are also included on the website. So that's Rent Relief, and that's stuff that's available right now, and we would certainly appreciate any opportunity through the town to try to get the word out to residents about its availability. I should also mention that Knight and Brent Speakman, as well as Brent Donovan, did a presentation for constituents a while back, and they have posted that presentation on their Facebook pages, so you can go back and take a look at that as well if you want. And then there's one other program that, and then I'll take whatever questions you may have. The Homeowners Assistance Fund is another program that, a federal program, Rhode Island received $50 million for that program. It's not open yet. We actually, Treasury, which runs the program, the US Treasury, only just opened up the opportunities to submit plans to them, and they have to prepare that plan. But as soon as they do, we'll be rolling that one out. That one is for homeowners, the same idea. They can fund mortgage assistance, both arrearses and supporting monthly payments moving forward, as well as utility expenses and some other housing-related costs, like property taxes, property insurance, mortgage insurance, things like that. Folks can qualify for up to $50,000 for up to 24 months. Income limits for this are higher, about $168,500. We don't have a ton of detail on that one yet, because we haven't gotten to the Treasury, but we do have a website, and the one pager that I gave you on that program has the website at the bottom, rihousing.com/hafri. Folks can go there and click to register. And if they do that, then once we have more information and the date for launch of the program, folks will get it automatically. So both programs that are a lot of resources, we're trying to get it into the hands of homeowners and renters, so appreciate any help you can offer.
Thank you. I guess my initial question is, the feedback I've heard, and this happened with the rollout of all of the assistance that was available at the beginning of the pandemic for small businesses and whatnot, it's, it can be really challenging to make it through the application process. And it seems very, these applications can seem very complicated and pretty daunting, and you know, if a person doesn't have access to the internet, and if a person doesn't even know that a program exists, or you know, I appreciate that you have such extensive language assistance there, but that seems to be the biggest hurdle, is getting people through the actual application process. So have, has that been modified, or has it, have you responded to address those frustrations or issues?
Yeah, and we actually had a little bit of a slow start, because we had a technology challenge at the beginning, that technology providers, we had a little bit of a retard on the program. That's part of the reason why we have the home ground partners and the call center folks. I can say that the program, we have streamlined since the program began in terms of some of the things that you have to provide, and part of it has been in response to Treasury guidance. So as the program has gone along, Treasury releases more and more guidance in terms of how to operate the programs and what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. So we have adapted and simplified the program where we can, as Treasury has come out with more guidance. But the call center folks and the folks at the community partners are definitely available for folks who are having trouble with what they need to submit. They try to walk them through any, you know, any appropriate documentation that they've got, or if there's the opportunity to do a self-attestation rather than documentation if they're unable to get that. We've definitely told everybody, don't not apply because you don't have a specific piece of paper, because the folks in the program will work with those people to figure out what the box that Treasury requires and.
I, having just gone through a few different application processes myself, two forms of ID, I mean, okay, good, I'm glad, because a person might think like, who has two forms of ID?
It does require that. You do have to have some form of identification.
Well, it can be a driver's license and a passport, or a social security card. Not everybody travels, not everybody has their social security card left. It can be, when you see what the list is, it's surprising that you might say like, I don't have those, or you know, I have the one, but not the other. So there are just hurdles to.
Absolutely, and we actually have, for each of those criteria, we've got like six to 10 different possible things that you can provide, and in some certain circumstances, you are allowed to do a self-attestation. Okay.
Not many questions. It sounds like a great program, and I know we'll do everything we can to get the word out, to piggyback on what President Cronin said, I'm glad there's a robust, apparently, call center, because a lot of the people that won't really need this program don't have, well, they don't have the internet access, and I know you mentioned stipend, internet stipends available. Oh, that's great, because yeah, people are, it's daunting to people, and so they need that, that one-on-one help. So I'm happy to hear that you have a call center ready and waiting.
And the information on the towers, and everything is right on the website, so.
Great. Thank you so much, Amy, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We will, next we have an interview for the Charter Review Commission, if there's one position available. And this evening, we will be meeting Mr. Kenneth McPhillips of 40 Truman Avenue. Mr. McPhillips, thank you for applying for the Charter Review Commission, as an opening has revealed itself. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself, and then what you think you might bring to this commission, and maybe some thoughts about the charter?
I'm Kenneth Phillips, I've been living in Rhode Island for 30 years now, I think I have a little more, I might. It's called Vacant Season, time to everything, so.
Very good. Questions from?
No, I just, I just know by speaking to the past fire chief that Kenny does his own. No, I just, I just know by speaking to the past fire chief that Kenny does his own, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of grants for the fire department. So he does, uh, dot his i's and cross his t's very well.
That's been a valuable asset.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear you say you do your homework because a lot of people don't. And, uh, you know, this is, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot of work involved with the charter review. And so it sounds like you're, you're prepared to put the time in and, uh, you know, you have experience in the town, especially in the fire department, it's great. There's a lot, there's a section on the fire department that charter review, which uh, could be valuable to review that for sure, so.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, I'm sure that, um, Mr. Galanelli, the chair, will reach out to you about times and places. Thank you. There are still positions open on the following boards. Conservation Commission, one position. Economic Development, one alternate position. Voluntary Historic District Committee, Board of Appeals, two positions. Zoning Board of Review, one alternate position.
I'd like to make a, and actually I read ahead in the agenda a little bit, we actually have resignation of another.
That is the member who is, uh, connected to this position. We accepted his resignation last month when we appointed him to the planning board.
Okay, so we, so we.
And this is just the.
So we're still just going to have one position?
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion, we, uh, renew the advertise the position on the website, the positions on the website. Want to go on paper with these?
Oh, zoning, I think we definitely would.
Yeah, and we, we gotta put one in, we might as well put them all in. So to continue to advertise all the positions on the website and in the local paper.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. An agenda item for next month to have a discussion on whether we want to continue with the, um, Voluntary Historic District Committee Board of Appeals. I think that's been here and I think we've all, uh, uh, agree that it's maybe not, uh, critical.
What we, yeah, we might be able to reword it so if the zoning board would sit as the Board of Appeals, would we do that possibly?
That we, yeah.
Have a discussion on that next one.
Um, next we have acceptance of minutes, we have July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one regularly scheduled minutes. Has anybody, has everybody reviewed and seen any corrections?
Motion to approve the regular town council minutes of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
All in favor? Aye.
I'll second.
Oh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
And we have acceptance of the July twenty, twenty twenty-one special meeting.
I will make a motion that we accept the special minutes for the special meeting on July twenty, twenty twenty-one.
I will second that. And, um, can we pass these? Because only two of us were at the meeting. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are passed. Next we have oh-one ordinance, chapter ten, Harbors and Vessels, Article One in general, first reading. We have, um, Mr. Ed Cabral, our harbor master with us, who can take us through. Oh, consent agenda. P one and P two, does anybody have a, um, any questions or concerns?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda passes, and now, Mr. Cabral. So we have some, uh, language here to update and clarify and remove some gray area from.
Correct, so oh-one is something that. So the, you can see the language that existed. Basically the violations under chapter ten. Holding misdemeanors penalty. Want to, uh, bring them down to a hundred dollar fine only.
What are those, what violations are in the chapter?
So the chapter ten currently, that's the two. Ten, just ten violations.
So currently, if you were to see a vessel out there and nobody's wearing life jackets and they don't have any on board with them, you can't do anything other than say. P E M can. Okay. Okay. The other questions?
Make a motion, we approve, uh.
Move to a second reading?
First reading and move to a second reading.
I'll second. Slow made motion.
We have a motion to move to, uh, to approve the first reading and move to a second reading, uh, oh-one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Oh-two, chapter ten, Harbors and Vessels, Article Two, Harbor Regulations.
So as we said, well, the other, currently we have ten violations or ten. Of course. So what I'm looking to do is bring in. Holding safe regulations that exist in the state. The requirements and standards, votes in the circuit. And also the state, uh, being allowed to also bring in the federal.
Have you witnessed, uh, do you witness violations regularly and you feel, you know, not empowered? Okay.
I will make a motion, we approve the first reading, uh, of chapter ten, Harbors and Vessels, Article Three, Harbor Regulations. Conditions and standards. And move to a second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The ayes have it. And finally, oh-three, chapter sixteen. Oh, thank you, Mr. Cabral. This is another one, okay. Mr. DeSisto, thank you.
I'm going to take this when I grab the language. Something that other police departments are going to do again. Becoming increasingly difficult, uh, find, uh, police officers, particularly, uh, because there's been like a wave of requirements and things of that nature. So what other communities are adopting and I advise that we can also, it's to provide ordinance allow for a, uh, hiring process, lateral transfers. It's set out in this, uh, ordinance that will allow the chief of police to hire up someone who is certified as a police officer. Uh, part of bringing them in, in a more streamlined process. Uh, there would be some, uh, things that we, uh, will have to do, taking more of fan, passages of physical examination, things of that nature. Uh, but this will just make it easier to, uh, hire police officers. Reading the, uh, this language that has been adopted by other communities, it's fairly standard, break one of my public departments and keep the competitive on this street.
Are we lowering our standards or are we expanding the hiring process?
This will allow, uh, for the chief to take a lateral transferring from the department. Some, a police officer that already has the certification, being a police officer. That will allow.
It's interesting that that wouldn't be something that could happen.
Under the current hiring practices, you need, you need to have the authorization to do something so that the officer coming from somewhere else doesn't have to go through the process. Because they're making lateral transfer, uh, to the department, that's something.
So they have already, they, they, they meet our standards and they meet our requirements. They just don't have to start at the beginning of the process and get up, so they're more likely to consider coming to our department. Okay.
Make a motion, we approve, uh, section sixteen dash eighteen, the hiring process for local transfers is the first reading and move to a second reading.
I will just make a slight amendment to per lateral transfers, not local transfers.
Lateral.
Will we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have P three, request for a one-day entertainment license from Jennifer Cuniallo. Is Ms. Cuniallo with us this evening to come forward? This is for an event on August twenty-first at twenty-six Clark Road from four-thirty to ten PM. It is a wedding, yours. Congratulations, um, and you would like to have an eight-piece band. Great, um, and you've, uh, talked to your neighbors and everybody in the, uh, areas. Very good. You've met, uh, you've talked to both police and fire for all of the safety concerns. Very good.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Congratulations.
P four is a request for a vitaling license from Naked Foods, R I, Inc., uh, four fifty-eight Main Street. Are the applicants with us? Steve and Mary? Good evening. There. Well, thank you, so, um, tell us a little bit about what your, uh, what type of food and what your business plan is. Have you done this before elsewhere? Very, very well, and, um, you, uh, are prepared for the, um, challenge of finding help? Deborah, any questions?
What hours do you plan on operating? Basically daytime hours.
Yes. You absolutely may. Your client?
Patriot.
You're going to recuse yourself.
Is there a particular, uh, menu item that would encourage us to approve?
Well, uh, let me just say this. Get a lot of, like I do, and you look like me, but I don't have to declare this dependent on my.
I will make a motion, we approve the vitaling license from Naked Foods, Rhode Island.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. P five, request for a class F beverage license from the East Bay Warriors at fifty-eight Barker Avenue. Um, there is an event scheduled for September fourth and fifth, uh, from one PM to eleven PM at Burst Hill Park. And it is annually known as Warren Family Fun Day, is Mr. Stephen Velasco with us? Introduce yourself. Oh, so it's not Warren Family Fun Day? Well, it's. It, it's, it says it on the paperwork and it says it on the agenda. We, we, uh, do we have the latitude to change the name of the event if it's already in print on a poster or something?
Yeah.
So, uh, do you have design work already in the making? And, and what do you call this event? Right, but it's called the Warren Family Fun Day.
It's just the application.
I think somebody wrote it, it doesn't look like the same handwriting.
Well, it, the, the application is for both the fourth and the fifth. Um, and we have your, your class F beverage and then following we have your entertainment license, which there may be a question on that apparently it's been resolved. So the class F beverage license, uh, permits you to sell beer and wine that day at the event. Um, and there's a, a roped-off area. All good? It's the concerts and the park series.
Yeah, we're, we're going to do, uh, the players aren't built earlier.
Okay.
The, uh, general that runs the pot series. Food truck, what's happening is we're going to step away from doing all the food that day, which was out money making things. Yes. Probably won't be. If the food truck stays the day. Food truck would normally be five to eight. So I asked, uh, how many people buy, they didn't, all, and they make a lot of money. People just do use. So it was a win for everybody, everybody, everybody.
Just for clarification again, this is, this is a fundraiser for the Warren Little League.
Saturday, with the benefactor, Warren Little League, it's taking Philip.
The two, okay, the two leagues, yep.
The second day, we, we had talked, it was, uh, interested in some bands that wanted to play. And, uh, Like so we had set it up on knowing that there was already something booked. We got together as a group. Gonna continue, but it's scheduled to be eight, eight, eight. They're gonna be up all day. There'll be three bands.
And the benefactor on Sunday.
Will be this is gonna be let's see, I would money is driven from concession. Stepping away from concession. So there'll be you have the major police presence and Steven's left, just that guy's left. Trust like
So Parks and Rec will get whatever.
That was the plan.
I'll make a motion. We approve P five for a class F beverage license. September fourth and September fifth. Burris Hill Park. Says one P M to eleven, but that's the maximum hours, right? Yeah. Yeah, from from one to one to eleven P M.
So we have a motion for P five. We have second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nobody else could be opposed?
And I will make a motion for to approve the I'll start at one day entertainment license. I will a two day entertainment license? Anthony, it says a one day entertainment license, but it's listed in two days. How do we do that? Okay, and I will approve the one day entertainment license for September fourth, September fifth from one to eleven P M.
All right. We have second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I guess you have your permission has been granted. I hope it is a successful and safe day. Correspondence. These items are received and filed with no other action taken unless, of course, somebody would like to.
No, I'm Mr. Atwood moved to the other board. So I don't think we need to send him a letter of recognition yet. We can wait till
Very good. I can just take a pause here. Are we streaming on YouTube this evening? There is a text from a constituent who is not seeing the YouTube is unable to find the YouTube. Is there a way of checking to see that that is so? So we are not preventing a person from viewing? Yeah, I can see. John and myself. Oh, that's the very beginning. Okay, so let them know that we're streaming. Next, we have old business. Discussion and action regarding a written policy for virtual participation in public meetings. We have received in our packets a series of recommendations from the solicitor and the manager. Basically, what it says is that we will not be trying to do hybrid meetings, that the only opportunity for a person to speak virtually would be in a prearranged mo- moment at the beginning of the meeting during public comment. I think we just don't have the technology to support the event that somebody couldn't hear or couldn't say or couldn't speak or couldn't do anything. And public comment that doesn't have any action or implications attached is is doable, but the rest of the evening or the rest of the meetings just don't seem to fall into that safe legal space.
That's an accurate statement. The Attorney General has stated that these meetings have to be, of course, they encourage activity. But to the extent that activity require contemporaneous participation, the technology is not not there, not just in Warren, but in other communities also. The points that you have in the town manager.
What was that about the technology? What was that about the technology, Anthony? Did you do that? Your little assistant out in the back there put get a gremlin out there?
Illustration.
Well, does it get recorded? So they don't get to watch it live. I say we continue.
Yeah, we're not required to do it.
Do not. And in fact, the meeting is so posted. It's a good idea to have the live streaming, of course, but you see what the technological issues are. Some communities run into trouble with that. They've had their public hearings and people outside, so they just couldn't participate if they wanted to. And that has to affect the speaking incident. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Well, I will make a a motion that we we adopt this now? What would be the proper step on this?
Are we just gonna stay like we usually do?
I recommend that you adopt it.
All right, I'll make a motion. We adopt the document as presented for the use of technology at open public meetings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Yes, have it. Thank you. In a perfect world, it would be nice to be able to accommodate, but the tech just doesn't exist, not in our And next we have discussion and action on report from the traffic advisory group regarding use of sidewalks other than by pedestrian electric bikes, motorcycles, scooters and bicycles. Our planning planner Bob Ruly worked with a group and has some recommendations here. As I had discussed with him earlier, I was hoping for something a little bit more meaningful and clear in regards to motorized vehicles on sidewalks, specifically the e-bikes and motorized scooters. They are that was the original intent of having this agenda item was the concern about safety on sidewalks. What is legal? What is not legal? So with your recommendation here in regard to thirteen and under being able to ride a bicycle on a sidewalk. That makes sense. And then obviously persons operating an electric personal assist assistive mobility device, an E P A M D on a town or state sidewalk, that's perfectly acceptable. But maybe you can talk more about
Yeah, I think this is a starting point. I mean, if you're going to have an amendment to the ordinance, you're going to have to have two readings. So this is not meant to be what the final text of that ordinance should be. If there are additions in based on our conversation earlier, I understand that you want to add more specific language as to what's allowed and what's not allowed. I think for the September meeting, we could add some more language that I do want to have a conversation with police chief because as I read the state statute on e-bikes, it seems to suggest that in order to ride an e-bike, you're supposed to have a driver's license and be of sixteen years of age. I don't know that that's being strictly enforced or so if that is in fact what was, we'd want to incorporate that as well. But this was just meant to be a starting point to we looked at what the ordinance was in cities like Newport that have a lot of bicycle traffic and other communities and plagiarize their ordinance. But happy to any additional comments or language beyond what we spoke about with other members. We would be happy to incorporate that.
I yeah, I agree with President Cronin that e-bikes was the original impetus for discussion here from Councilman Kalenda. And so I think that really needs to be incorporated within this somewhere ordinance. Because they are becoming more prevalent. I ride the bike path all the time and I'm seeing them out there and it's actually dangerous.
As do I.
So and and so, yeah, I definitely think that's important to get into this document. E-bikes, we should work.
Yeah, I mean, we we on sidewalks. I mean, we can't keep e-bikes off of
Correct. No, I yeah, I agree. Absolutely.
And as we talked about today, I mean, there's motorized scooters, skateboarders and other types of mobility devices that people have known that
So can I ask a question about the E P A M Ds? Is it so? Is that a wheelchair, electric wheelchair or what else is that?
Yeah, I mean, there are any type of mobility device to assist people that have legitimate handicaps.
Like an electric bike?
Well, that's not
Well, I mean, I
I mean, I think
I can make that argument.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that this is related to people that have a physical disability. I don't think a person with a physical disability would be riding an electric bike because you still have to pedal that bike. It's not entirely just hit the switch and it rolls.
Yes, but then, you know, they have a companion horse. Can they bring them or compassion horse? Can they bring that on the sidewalk with them? See, that's the problem. You're gonna get people abusing their tech on this. Like the what they call the people that they're not servicing most of their emotional support. Yeah, so somebody's gonna bring their emotional support pony on the sidewalk.
Only to
This is my emotional support bicycle. It's electric. They can. It's not electric. They can't. I I think it's good that we're doing this. It's just, you know, there's so many ways to weasel around the the actual laws that are for the people that designed to protect.
So for September, we'll come back with proposed language for the ordinance and you can either add to that or subtract from that.
Who? Actually, I think this question might be for the chief of the sollicit. Who enforces the electric bikes on light path considering it says no motorized vehicles?
Current jurisdiction, but supervision by the
So if a police officer were to have an issue, they can issue the violation.
That's why I say it's current jurisdiction.
Really good. It's an issue to brow. Maybe the police will have to look at enforcement for an educational purpose. To get somebody's attention is to stop it. Tell us signs are right there.
Well, it'd be better if you had
All right, I'll do that too.
All right, so we have some language here that we've all had time to to read and review if there are further recommendations for the for the planner to consider. I was the traffic advisory group, yes, for the entire traffic advisory group. Please submit them and we can hear those those suggestions next month and move forward with the ordinance.
Yes, you want that in the form of a motion or?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we have three.
Motion to extend it to September.
At the advice of our solicitor, we are going to continue to September given some potential issues with the title of the property on which the kayak racks would possibly sit. And we need to be sure that we are all in good standing before we approve something that may be legally clouded. So Plan again?
I think more legislation trust. Question is more about the title of the road. That's the question that papers the greatest title for the plan was probably
Maple Road?
That section of Maple Road.
I will get an answer. Make a motion to continue up next month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lovely kayak rack. February. New business recommendation of the planning board in support of creating two special revitalization districts, Medicom Avenue and Main and Water Street. Discussion and action regarding next steps again to Mr. Ruly.
Just discussion. There's no action required now. I mean, moving forward with both the Medicom plan as well as the redevelopment of the national grid site. We've talked about the possibility of implementing tax recolleting financing. In order to do that, we have to designate them as special revitalization districts. At the same time, we're looking to update both the comprehensive plan and make zoning both map and text ordinance amendments. So to not replicate series of public hearings on each of these individually, we would combine those most likely later in this year or early next year. So the planning board is supportive of creating the special revitalization districts, but nothing else is required at this time.
Very good. Any questions for the planner?
Nope. So the can I ask about the Medicom app corridor? It's from Vernon to Bristol Line. That's north south. What's the width of that?
Revitalization district would be just those properties that are have an address.
Okay.
And do we do we have a number on the how many butters would need to be notified?
A lot isn't specific, but
A lot is it's it's a lot.
But that's in the future.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, you need a motion to approve it? To continue on, no action? All right.
Yeah, thank you very much. Moving in in the right direction. Number three. Oops, no, number two, discussion and action regarding request requests from Sebar Bay, Brayton Point for a letter to the governors of Massachusetts and Rhode Island regarding activities occurring at Brayton Point in Somerset, Mass. Welcome. Please introduce yourself. Is this Mr. Jeff Cardell?
Yes, it is.
It's nice to meet you in person.
Thank you. We have Chair Councilman I reside at seven fifty eight Brayton Point Road in Somerset, Mass. President of nonprofit organization called Sebar Bay Brayton Point. As you are aware, Brayton Point Power Station closed in two thousand eighteen. Purchased by a company called Commercial Development Corporation. They came to our town and put on a giant dog and pony show about bringing wind power to Brayton Point. And that has not happened. We don't believe that's ever gonna happen. So just to give you a little brief description of what's been going on since then. As I mentioned, two thousand eighteen, the plant closed, ceased operations. Because the Trump administration had put a hold on wind power. Brayton Point decided they were gonna try to bringing some income. income. And the, what they ended up doing was they got a verbal agreement from some officials in our town to be able to start operating scrap metal operation on that property. And they had four fires, residents of Brayton Point, at that time thought that that scrap metal pile was from demolition of the power plant. We since learned that it was not, they were actually trucking in scrap metal from all over the East Coast and gonna load ships. Not sure if you're familiar with Brayton Point area, Somerset, but nearest house is about 700 feet from that property where they run the scrap metal. Ships are in a 24-hour operation. Federable, I live on Truck Route, right now I have about 150 trucks a day going by my house. They wanted, wanted to, reached to 500 trucks. It's one way in and one way out. So we, the residents, noticed that the scrap metal pile was getting bigger and bigger, so we started confronting positions and attending meetings and created this nonprofit organization. Since then, all this happens. We are now about 4,000 members strong, we started out about 25 people, 25 concerned neighbors. We have now a membership of over 1,000 people. A lot of residents from Warner, are members. We've seen complaints from this town, from residents, about hearing scrap metal noise. Tell you, living in that area, they are slinging scrap metal, it sounds like a car crash every day. So we forced the town to hire an outside entity to do the testing of the dust and noise levels that's coming into the neighborhood. Levels are high, lead, cadmium, mercury, zinc, I have the report here, I'll leave with you. We're all concerned, we're concerned. And we, now, there's almost that, I mean, I could spend three hours telling you everything that's gone on in the last two years. We now have the Attorney General of Massachusetts suing them. Thank God, hopefully that's gonna come soon. Actually, I just got my affidavit, so hopefully that's coming down the pipe. They gave that company a 60-day notice that they're suing. They are currently operating under multiple cease and desist operations, cease and desist orders, they continue to operate. They have racked up over $2 million in fines down Somerset. Next month, we've won zoning board appeals and decisions, no resident in the town of Somerset has ever won a zoning, we won three in two years. They are now, the company is now suing some of our residents. This, this company, in our research, we found out that the deed to the property originally in 1959, says that the dock, it was never adopted, that dock was brought up out of water by the only corporation. That deed specifically states that that dock and 12.5 acres around that dock are to be used in the adjacent power plant. It's our opinion that they are no longer generating power. And that 12.5 acres in that dock is owned, I have a letter here that I'm giving as well, from attorneys of the state of Massachusetts, that states that that property, dock, 12.5 acres, are under the control of the Department of Conservation and Recreation, so owned by the state of Massachusetts. Resource Development Corporation is leasing Massachusetts home property to Eastern Metals Recycling illegally, in our opinion, to run a scrap metal. My opinion, state of Massachusetts is currently knowingly and willingly allowing this company to poison residents, responsibly, and, and, you know, continue to pollute the bank. We have hundreds of videos and drone footage, pictures of them discharge rusting water. We've had species floating in the bay where they've emptied the ships cargo. I mean, it's an absolute nightmare to live, believe me, I'm, I'm not a politician, I've never attended a board meeting in my life before this, I've attended every meeting in my town for two and a half years, and I mean, school committee meetings, council meeting meetings, I've attended every single one of them, they get somebody to listen to what's going on.
Matt Chair, if I, I unfortunately have to leave.
Yes.
And Mr. Cardell, you had contacted me and we had worked previously with the, in cooperation with the LNG efforts that we were successful on. I'm gonna have to go, my recommendation would be to have the solicitor review your legal case, the legal situation, and that we make a motion to support, in the best interest that we can legally, the support you need for the cleanliness of the bay. I'm not sure that we can enter into those other discussions that do take place in, on the Somerset end of it, but I know that Mr. De Sisto will review the case legally, he will put together a support position that the town can feel merit, merits the, the request.
Sure.
up the bay, and, I don't know.
I reached out to Bristol.
Bristol.
I've reached out to Bristol.
I know the Senator Philag was instrumental in shutting down the oil tanks and cleanup in Tiverton, so there's a lot of resource there. I unfortunately have to go, I had a work schedule, I got called in earlier rather than what I thought it was gonna be. I make a motion to support your efforts in the language that Mr. De Sisto feels is appropriate.
Thank you very much.
So the motion is to provide a letter to both governors and both attorney generals?
Right. You can draft the letter, I have examples here from the town of Swanson and from the town of Somerset as well.
You can leave those with the clerk.
I, I, I will leave these and I can email them as well, I can email you the hard copies. Again, also in here is the dust report from Sage Environmental, dust and noise report. Also in here is, like I said, a conservation letter confirming that the state of Massachusetts doesn't back on the property. And then also in here are some letters that were written to our school committee from children in the area who were having trouble sleeping at night, focusing during the day, during school hours because they kept on, they were on home late for five days, the ship is in for five days. And it's, when I tell you this, it's wrong.
We can vote on this, I, I can, I can have a vote, if not, I gotta go.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second, to direct the solicitor to draft a letter in support of these efforts in whatever form it should be, a resolution, a letter?
To the governor.
To the governor.
Attorney General.
To all of the, the named officials.
Yeah.
Okay. Second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm leaving because of work, that needs to be said. Bye, everyone.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, all set, so please do leave all of the documents with the clerk and we are very grateful for your efforts and hope that we can see some.
I appreciate.
An end to this.
I appreciate, I, I will say, I say this usually at every meeting, there are two facts that I like to state at every meeting, one, the Sebar Bay Brayton Point is not against, you know, commercial or industrial business on waterway, what we are against is irresponsible industrial business, that's what we are against. And then, last thing I'd just like to say is, this is just not a Somerset issue, this is a regional issue. And I tell you that there are people on our Facebook page, if you get a chance, if you're on there, follow us, there are warm reticents who, you know, consistently say they can hear noise all the way. Yeah, this is not something. No one blocked it, so.
You're, you're very good at it.
Great, appreciate it.
Very compelling. We breathe the same air, we, we recreate in the same water, we all share the responsibility and concern for it, so.
We live next to that power plant from 1950, you know, with us, the 1950, the big wind, the issue, key, to care, they shut down, they had wind restrictions. This company, I've seen them in Yale Force 60 mile winds, slinging scrap metal, they don't care, they're a European company, they're here to make money, they don't care about the residents. Look up to them, they would buy every house on Brayton Point and get us out of here. I mean, I've lived, my grandma's house, I've been with it since 1952, they're gonna carry me out on a wild rancher before I give up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, recommendation, NB3, recommendations and requests from parking management study committee, so again, our planner.
It started as a very well-intentioned group, a very large problem, that after three meetings recognized that they probably were not able to solve all of the problems that exist with respect to parking. There are some specific recommendations with respect to additional striping on some of the, off of Water Street on Liberty and Union that, you know, would help with parking. I think the biggest takeaway is to hire a parking consultant, both to look at how we can maximize existing parking that the town has, but also it's a parking strategies. I don't think this group was comfortable making a recommendation that we should go to resident sticker parking or things of that nature. And we didn't necessarily have as good a cross-section of participants as we would have liked, though there was, you know, several requests from the public that they could participate. And then, you know, obviously, on the weekends, the Water Street area, Main Street area are seeing a lot of pedestrian traffic, that there's increased enforcement, but overall, our parking ordinance has many deficiencies and inconsistencies, so requesting that we direct manager and I to kind of take a deep dive into making recommendations to clean that ordinance up. But I think the most significant piece is bringing on a professional parking consultant to come up with some strategies that we can bring back to both the community, the business community, as well as council, and that would include shared parking, parking that, you know, might be available at churches and other nonprofits that are not paying taxes and utilizing it, but just, and also an education campaign with both the community and the restaurants in terms of the proximity of free public parking.
I appreciate that, as a longtime small business owner on Water Street, I can tell you that the parking, the perception of parking issues have become a reality and not just a perception, there is constant concern and, and complaint about resident versus visitor versus business, employee parking in very limited spaces. I for one believe that the striping of the, and the identifying of spaces along Water Street has been helpful, I know that we may have net lost a few spaces, but at least we are maximizing the spaces where they do exist, and we've also addressed some safety concerns with cars being parked too close to corners, that now needs to move up to the neighborhood streets, specifically all of Union and other streets that are near to both Main and Water Street, just for safety of, you know, our fire rescue, police vehicles being able to get around and navigate to do what they need to do. But, yeah, I, I think a, a professional consultant would do wonders, and I think that a full review of the ordinances as they exist right now would be really appreciated, too, because for us to continue to grow as a destination for visitors from all over the region and really the world, I mean, I get people in my, my store from all over the world, they need to feel welcome and they need to feel like we've got some smart planning going on here and that we're ready to welcome people into our community. I'd like to see the addition of bike racks, more bike racks around town, we are a biking destination, granted, we have a bike path bridge issue, but we're working on that, too. But to welcome more people in via other modalities besides cars, we need to provide them for the, with the place to keep their, their bikes safe. So do we have a motion to direct planner and manager to do a review of the ordinances? And how will that, and to bring in a consultant to, to review?
We have to do an RFP.
Okay. And those funds would come from?
Say that the traffic advisory group would make an issue, right? Inspire.
Very good.
I'll put that in the form of a motion, that the director of planning and the town manager review, in consultation with the police department, the town's parking ordinances, and put forth amendments and additions as needed, and also that they present an RFP for a parking consultant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Next, we have invitation regarding a candlelight vigil on August 31st, we have Amaree Roy and Maria Ursini with us this evening, please tell us a little bit about the event.
Hello. Good evening. So, I'll get pretty first, I mean, a candlelight vigil. In book. Oh, you have one.
We have, we are, yeah, plaster these all over.
Yours is easier to read. It's printed landscape.
Anyway, the vigil is going to start at the recovery center on 31 Fairwood Avenue, rated for us from the police station, we're gonna gather the air, we have candles up there, we're gonna walk, I'm not sure what. Walk to St. Mary's Day Church, and when we get there, we have the opening blessing. We have a couple guest speakers, and we have music, and then Father is going to do the final opening, and then we're going back to recovery center for the reception. It's that first candlelight vigil, so it's gonna be nice, it's gonna be good, thanks for a long time, we had to do it for families, free event, people, everybody, folks, we watched their bikes and stuff, and use. And in order to report of those who struggle with addiction or recovery. But we come before you because we'd like to pass the one of the ribbons in the town wall, this apartment. W. Post on May three.
Well, I'm really pleased and honored to be asked to participate in this event. And the thought and the the uh the the tick off to substance abuse awareness month, which happens in September, this is a perfectly timed event. And, you know, uh giving support to those families who are struggling or have members in their family, their friends, their community who are struggling with substance abuse. And then, you know, just celebrating and remembering those we've lost. I think this is a really wonderful thing to start to do. And I I think it's going to be a really special, special evening. So thank you so much for uh all of your work in planning and and supporting this group. So um we don't really need to make a motion. I I think we got a a nod in, of course, in from from Mr. Malik that you'll assist uh with the the purple ribbons and um already worked with the uh with police and fire as far as safe route to and from.
Yes.
And it should be a really nice evening. Thank you. Why don't you stay right there?
Yeah.
Okay. Number five. Discussion and action regarding National Recreation and Park Association, NRPA, youth mentoring grant for the twenty twenty park and recreation mentorship for rural youth impacted by opioids. So is this one of the, is this, should this be twenty twenty-one, or is this one of those things like the Olympics that we have the twenty twenty Olympics and twenty twenty-one? Right, but the the we have twenty twenty on here. I'm just wondering. Okay, good. Yes, we do. We have a nice copy of that. So we are requesting approval of memorandum of understanding and authorize the town manager to sign. But maybe you could just talk to us a little bit about what this program will do or what what you will be doing with the sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars in grant money.
So basically, it's a a grant that was brought before us for the Trump Warren. It's going to be um the mentoring grant for students. That's going to be working with different organizations and the training mentors in. So um we wrote it for the recreation. So Tara came to us and so what we did is we helped her put this grant together and we submitted it. And we went through a couple of different interviews. The um so the town law is looking up that we were awarded the ultimate prize next year. So this came with Tara's idea, but it helped her point out with um with our mentor work. That's basically what this was on was to help and assist um for the relationship with youth. Tara gave her help with your addiction. That's what went on and how we can mentor these kids, try to break them in, mentor them with adults. Tara's vision is to also help them. Younger, I obviously so that's what we're in the process now. Um, this was basically what it's not that long ago. Tara throughout our industry. Yeah. Watch number. Do that. Tara's in. The greatest part about this is they think we want so the guidelines that this possibility big place. Begin stage, um the beginning. Going to build a foundation, yes, and then it all yeah, we have a meeting with them on Thursday.
You need to recruit mentors.
Yes.
Uh, you you look for peer mentors or like typically is that that kind of, okay, so.
Which we had a similar program a few years ago at the middle school.
Yes.
That, you know, we did that with, again, through protection grants. And it worked out really, really well. We used to have it at school here. And then mentor our students. And so the Lions Club and the Els, we've got quite a road radius. So hopefully that they will grow to be what they want to add. They are highly like and again, they'll survive. And it's all, you know, get trained. And it takes some hard work. Trial performance of, you know, what they're into. And it'll take a little while to all the things that that's all off the pox that I can't that's sent it to.
Very good.
Anthony, have you had a chance to review the and I'll give you I will make a motion to uh have all of understanding and authorize the town managers to sign it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance Director, um our finance director is not here this evening but is available to answer questions. If we have any weaknesses, submit them to her. The revenue and expenditures report did arrive to us digitally. Ms. Michaud, did you have anything you would like to say, or did any of the council members have questions about that report?
I just wanted to note that Ms. Chan wanted me to pass along that they are wrapping up the fiscal year twenty-one accounting and that they are preparing for the audit, which will be.
I did notice that the first three pages were capital expend and and so they were that that's that's the previous, right? Because, yeah, because but the date on the report is July this year. So, yeah, I mean, I I kind of got that. And so I just made that assumption that it was, yeah. It's fiscal year, okay.
Very well. Alrighty, thank you. Tax Assessor, we've got uh twenty twenty-one abatements and twenty twenty-one additions. Abatements of a thousand fifty-seven eighty-one and additions of two hundred nine thirty.
I'll make a motion that we abate the twenty twenty-one tax roll in the amount of one thousand fifty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. And also that we make an addition to the twenty-one tax roll in the amount of two hundred nine dollars and thirty cents. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Police Chief. We have discussion and action on a purchase of two police SUVs and equipment for the Warren Police Department in the total amount of one hundred and ten dollars, four hundred fifty-five, one hundred and ten thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy cents pursuant to mass price agreement, Plymouth County Municipal Vehicle Bid from CMG Colonial Municipal Group to be funded out of capital, a capital account, which number we can read in a motion. Talk to us about the uh the vehicles and the equipment to be purchased.
And this will lock in the price, too, so they won't be able to jack it up.
Just replacement to vehicles that have higher mileage.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you.
I will make a motion that we uh purchase the two police SUVs as recommended by the chief in the amount of one hundred and ten, four hundred and one hundred and ten thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy cents. Have come out of account number oh one dash zero two zero dash two one dash zero zero two six. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Public Works, Mr. Malik, we have discussion and action on a purchase of an Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper for two hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars. This is pursuant, of course, to Gordaling Master Price Agreement, five thirty, to be funded out of a capital account.
Jan, do we have a lot of pelicans in the street?
Yeah.
Geese, maybe.
You're taking up up the Tony.
I know we are sweepers now, working one that we own and one that Bristol let us borrow this year. We broke down and that's that's probably my opinion, second best thing we do in the town, besides snowplow, is trying to keep the streets clean. And your constituents, very.
That's it does. That's it does. So what's the timeframe on getting this?
Uh, last time I talked to him, he was talking at the end of September. That's why I came to find him out, to make sure that he can, you know, check from from even just presented swap out. Five thousand dollars.
And then we're repairing the one that we borrowed from Bristol?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, what I ended up doing, make sure we had enough money. Back in the budget cycle. Seven thousand dollars to play, to change the rates. So I took some money out of the last week and let go of my gate to have seven, three thousand five hundred and fifty-six thousand, add back. Basically, now it takes us one to have, they have all the streets now. They do it correctly. Plus white sneakers that was like I said, people may see, it's like seeing the extreme that's that's they do it weekly in Kentucky because they find all the people that leave their cars empty.
Pays for the street sweepers. I will make a motion, we approve the purchase of an Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper in the amount of two hundred thirty-eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars, be funded out of account oh one dash oh two one dash two two dash zero zero one four. Actually, while I have Mr. Malik's attention.
Do we have a second? Or is this discussion?
No, this is unrelated. I just didn't want to get too far away.
Okay, so do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Will you ever get the the wheat sprayer thing? With the Bobcat? Can we get a little wheat sprayer thing to go on the Bobcat?
No, no, we have wheat wheat sprayer container. Now, now we're writing up the problem, round up and stuff like that. A lot of guys want to make sure it's coming up like the two guy and I have to start looking into stuff about biodegradable like it goes, this equals kill weeds. And I'm always
The north, the north end was getting a little
And it's a lot of, I noticed this year, I'll tell you, with all the rain that we had, we just did State Street. I mean, last year in the sidewalks, I couldn't believe the grass living between the current and the sidewalk. You know, and that was the, actually, Miller Street was in that one. Buy it. We wagons instead of spraying, we wagging up just in nature the other day. That's 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 tough because I think that's by right, we could do all the child street. Right now, we take care of basically those like the eight of seven.
How would you? No. Or can we send a bill for the services rendered by our department? Okay, just just an idea.
Thanks, Jan.
Thank you. All right, and finally, town clerk, request a motion for the town council to approve and authorize the council president to sign a lease with Pitney Bowes postage machine.
I will make a motion that we approve it. And we approved to have the president sign the lease with Pitney Bowes for the new postage machine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. I have a pen here if you'd like me to sign that. I have a contract? Oh, this is it. This is the official one. This isn't just like.